To each and every one of you. Uh, today being the first Tuesday of the month. Welcome to the City of Daly City Virtual Planning Commission. On August three, twenty twenty-one. The current virtual planning commission meeting format has been undertaken with the City of Daly City. In response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The planning commission thanks the public for his participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the commission receive any and all comments that you may wish. To make for the land use proposal being considered tonight. If you would like to comment, please register to do so at the website address that is on the screen. Thank you. Okay, may I call on Commissioner Gary to lead the.
Ray, before we go any further, I just want to leave this on the screen for a second for anybody who wants to.
Yes.
Register for the meeting, you'll need to. Either copy or type this into your um rounds or bar.
To those who wishes to participate in our tonight's deliberation. You can just write it down and then join our meeting. It will be a very interesting uh subject tonight, so. Those who wishes to participate, please write it down. Okay?
I'm also gonna, just for a second, Ray, I'm gonna read some of the rules about raising your hand and um providing public comment.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, public comment may be provided for specific agenda items as well as the general public comment period under public appearances portion of this meeting. In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the planning commission is not authorized to speak or take any action. On any other items in this meeting. During the general public comment period and for each item on the agenda, staff will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click. The raised hand feature to raise your hand and speak on that agenda item. We're not having anybody join by phone, so that next sentence doesn't apply. Please note that members of the public must wait for staff's staff's prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. Also important, staff will announce the name and last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment and that person will be. The last verbal comment for the item. And that person will be the last verbal comment for the item. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the chairman may continue to allow the public comment if time allows. Otherwise, the public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org. To be added to the record and shared with the planning commission. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance with the rules of decorum will be muted. Um, yeah, we'll just leave it there and if there's any questions.
Okay.
Ask those now, that concludes my my part, sorry, I'm gonna now stop the share.
Thank you very much, Michael, for your information. Now we moving ahead, let's go to the. Pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Gary, Commissioner. Roll call, please.
Present.
Checo.
Present.
Pro año. Pro año. Thought I saw her here.
There's Teresa.
I saw, I thought I saw her earlier.
Teresa, are you here?
Connecting.
Well, anyway, we will, we will call back.
Oh, there she is. I don't think our microphones on.
Oh. Okay, we will consider this question.
And finally, Satori.
Here, thank you very much, and. Going ahead. Approval of the June first, twenty twenty-one virtual planning commission meeting. Um, any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moving seconded that we adopt. And approve the minutes of the June first, twenty twenty-one virtual planning commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much, approved. Now, uh. We are going to have the first agenda which would be conducted by staff Carmelisa Morales. However, I'm going to read it. General Plan Amendment GPA dash zero four dash twenty-four point one. Zero one four nine nine eight. Plan Development PD dash zero four point one zero one four nine nine seven. Design Review zero four dash twenty-one. Zero one five zero 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 and major subdivision. SUV dash zero four point one dash zero one four nine nine nine. Or preliminary plan review of the proposed precise plan to allow. The development of the Ceremonial Del Rey Campus. An environmental impact report will be prepared for this project pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act. As part of the precise plan states of the project. Uh, this will be done by. Staff Carmelisa Morales, associate planner, to do that as the owner of presenting this. Uh, review. Go ahead, you recognize. Uh, engineer Morales.
You, uh, good morning, or good morning, good evening, everyone. Um, Michael, if you don't mind, can you enable the the share screen? And can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes, I can. We can hear you clearly, loud and clear.
Okay. Great, um, so as I'll be presenting on the preliminary plan review for the ceremony. Ceremony Del Rey Campus redevelopment project. Um, so my next few slides will just go over the. Where the site is located and just some general existing conditions. Um, so in this map, you'll see where the project site is located, it's at six nine nine Ceremony Boulevard. Um, you can see it's right between Highway one, I two eighty and Skyline Boulevard. Oh, and I forgot to mention, um. The J U H S D City Council Committee was convened last month as discussed in the staff report. Um, they were provided some introductory um comments and they were able to provide some feedback. Um, and they did recommend that we move forward with the preliminary plan review. Um, in addition, uh, staff did receive three public comments um earlier today and they were forwarded to um. To the commissioners um when they were received. Um, so this is the project site, um, you can just see its proximity to the um Pacific Ocean. Um, as well as the Ceremony Shopping Center, which is right below, um, and this is facing south. And in this slide, you'll see the project site and the surrounding uses. Um, there's a lot of residential, some multifamily residential to the west or to the um south. Um, a school site as well as some medical offices. And some background on this project, so there was a plan development approved in nineteen eighty-five um for the campus. Um, it for the campus itself, it allowed a hundred seventy-five residential units and seven hundred thousand square feet of office. It was amended um recently in January twenty twenty to allow for the. The district's faculty and staff housing project, which is currently under construction. Um, and currently what's on site, um, this next slide you'll see um. Is the existing school district building, um, part of it is being used for the school district's offices. Um, some, some of the space is being rented out to nonprofits, there's some temporary buildings. Um, the hatched area is where where the uh faculty and staff housing site is located. Um, there's also a demonstration garden used for educational purposes or was used for educational purposes. Um, um, at the southwest corner of the site. Um, and within the black border is the remainder of the PD thirty-one area, which will remain PD thirty-one and is not part of this current proposal. Um, and this just shows a clear view of the existing conditions of the site as well as the topography. These next few slides show the existing um conditions from the public right away. So this is from Ceremony Boulevard in Calan. Um, and then another one from Calan Boulevard, you can see around the perimeter, there's a lot of mature um mature trees and vegetation. And then these photos, you see the project site from Ceremony Boulevard, you see the. The faculty and staff construction site to the right and on the bottom photo, this is from a southeast view from Ceremony Boulevard. And this photo is if you are entering the site from the southern edge, um, from Campus Drive. Um, you can see how the elevation is quite different from this side. And briefly to go over the proposed project, um, the school district is presenting a new precise plan. To allow for the forward year redevelopment of the campus. Um, they are presenting or they are proposing up to. Uh, one thousand two hundred thirty-five units, um, both affordable and market rate. Um, the city does require a minimum of ten percent rental housing be affordable. Um, there is also up to fourteen thousand square feet of retail commercial, commercial proposed. As well as a new Head Start childcare facility, which is an existing tenant on the site. Um, they intend to subdivide the um the property into seven development parcels as well as various street parcels for access. Um, they, they believe it will take about ten years to develop the site. Um, but potentially up to fifteen years depending on economic conditions. Um, and the district does anticipate that developers would like to develop the the um, the project site parcel by parcel. So that's how they develop the precise plan, um, it includes some guidance for development review as well as um approval by the city. And in their proposal, they are also including the next um development slated for construction, which is on parcel B. Uh, which would include two hundred and one units, um, eight thousand square feet of retail, a park, um. Play area and some residential amenities. Um, and then the subsequent design review, um, as a subsequent development applications for the remaining parcels. Um, would have to go through a design review approval process. And I did mention a few of the parcel letters, so this is it on an actual plan. Parcel A is where the faculty and staff housing site is located. Parcel B is what's included in this proposal, um, that will be reviewed during the precise plan review stage. And then the other parcels um within the project site. Um, and briefly, this is the phasing plan, um, of course, it could change slightly depending on market conditions. Or what the developers or the future developers intend to do. Um, but they do intend to build out or is they will build out parcel A and B as part of phase one. Um, a couple of the uh streets and overlook park. Um, for phase two, um, they intend to demolish the existing school building. Um, build out parcel C, um, which includes Head Start and the planned affordable housing development. Um, as well as additional streets. And then for phase three, they'll build out parcels E and F and the central green, which is the main park area in the phase, in the precise plan. Okay, so the next two slides um show what the project entitlements are. Um, a general plan amendment is required, um, they need to convert or to change the land use designation to commercial mixed use to allow for the proposed um uses. Uh, they will have to rezone for to allow for the new plan development. Um, they do need a major subdivision to subdivide the project site. Um, and each of the buildings that will go on site and the general site design will have to go through design review. Uh, lastly, the, there is a environmental impact report that is being prepared for this project. Um, that will be, they'll need to be certified at the precise plan stage, um, circulation will have to happen before that. Um, and just to note again, um, the future or the other parcels that are not in the current phase. Will have to go through design review committee approval. Um, and this slide just briefly summarizes what is included in tonight's review as well as what will be reviewed by the city council. Um, the planning commission will review the proposed land uses, circulation and overall site design as well as the fiscal and fiscal impact. Um, they can recommend approval, conditional approval or denial of the preliminary plan and then this will be forwarded to the city council. And this shows the um, the planned build out of the precise plan area. You'll see the um, the streets that were briefly mentioned and also mentioned in the staff report as well as the parcels that they intend to develop. And then also Central Green, which is the main park area, and then the Overlook Park, which is included in parcel B. Um, and this shows briefly the the parcel B development, um, this just want to give you a sense of what the massing is going to look like. Um, and where the park will be located. Um, as for the development plan, um, so a quick breakdown, the parcel A, which is the faculty and staff housing site. Um, it does include one hundred twenty-two apartments, um, parcel B will have two hundred one as well as eight thousand square feet of retail commercial space. Um, parcel C is the location for Head Start as well as the planned affordable housing um development. And then parcel D through F will have um about a thousand units and sixteen, six thousand square foot of retail available for those proposals. Uh, and this shows um the access and circulation plan for the precise plan area. Um, we recently received the transportation impact analysis, um, so that's what needs to be reviewed by the city. Um, so this could change depending on what um, what we find or if there's any comments. Um, but as proposed, this is what the current circulation plan is. And as for parking, um, as mentioned, we do have to review the report that was submitted recently. Um, but the proposed parking is one point five to one point seven spaces per residential unit. Five spaces per thousand square feet of retail space, um, various street parking. Um, and any future development that wants anything different from this would have to go submit a parking analysis that would be reviewed by the city. And this summarizes the um. The findings from the office market and fiscal impact study. Um, and in some, the project site was, it was determined that it's not a competitive site. Um, to attract office development, COVID nineteen did, did play a part in that. There's a lot of uncertainty in the office market demand world. Um, but in general, there is indirect fiscal benefit. Um, this new source of revenue will assist the school district in many ways such as um. Providing them with more in their operating budget, um, as well as in the long run, improving quality of education in Daly City. Um, and there was an update to the fiscal study, um, not really many changes, but more. Uh, details as to the fiscal um benefit of the proposed development. Um, we can answer any questions on that if you have any later in the presentation.
Okay, are you through?
Uh, yes, so I'm at the last slide, um, so this is the recommendation, so staff recommends that the planning commission take the following action. Um, which is to recommend that the city council approve the preliminary plan for the proposed plan development. Um, and I'm available to answer any questions, um, and if it's okay, the applicant's team would like to make a brief presentation.
Okay, thank you very much Carmelisa for your wonderful presentation. Uh. Before I open this to the public hearing, let me ask my colleagues to. Ask the first question. Any question for my colleague?
I do.
None.
No, I have a question, I have a lot of question, but let me ask first your, my fellow, my colleague here to ask a question.
Isn't there a presentation first or another presentation or?
That was the presentation.
Oh.
The school district would like to make a presentation as well, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead, so we will be delighted more if there is any presentation, okay? About this, yeah, okay, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we'd like to, hi, this is Bruce, because you both broke like, can we um have permission to share a screen?
Should work.
Okay.
One second. And are you seeing the right one or are you seeing the?
Which one are you seeing? It's in presentation view.
Okay, so you're seeing just the presentation itself, not the?
No, I'm seeing the presentation, the notes in the slides.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
There you go. Hi, my name is Clemons Long Dean and I'm on the board of trustees for Jefferson Union High School District. Um, I want to thank all of you for having us here today and hearing us out. Um, it's, uh, we were just, it's been a lot of work and we're happy to be able to share the work that we've done with all of you. Um, I'm joined by my fellow trustee Andy Lee, who is on the um, subcommittee um for the development. Um, in the audience, they're not speaking, but just in the audience, we're just acknowledging our superintendent Tony Preston and our chief business officer, Tina Van Raphorst. And as well as Brooklyn Associates, who are consultants, they'll also be joining us, so next slide. So again, the why, um, and this is why I'm here, um. We are a underfunded school district, unfortunately, the state of California funds school districts in relative to property values. And so we are drastically underfunding when you compare us to our high school districts to the south. Um, they, they have hard corporations, they have Oracle, they have a Facebook, they have a Gilead, they have a Genentech that brings in lots of more. Um, property taxes that go directly to their schools. We don't have any of that, they also have the ability to levy much higher taxes than we do. So they are sometimes getting two to three times as much as we are in front of funding when you take in all the grants. The uh, the parcel taxes, the, the education foundations, it's very hard to us, for us to compete. And attract and retain our teachers and staff. So we are used to losing a third of our staff every year, over five hundred employees. So you can imagine trying to run any organization when you turn over a third of your staff every single year. Especially an organization that is handling our children in our community, which are our future. You're only in eleventh grade once, you're only in tenth grade once, you only take that math class once. You only have the ability to take art once, and we know what happens when you lose those opportunities with last year and everything that happened with COVID. So it's been exasperated by the current pandemic. Um, so we, um, in looking at our current resources and assisting facilities that we have. The Ceremony Del Rey office is just, it's served its time, it's extremely outdated. Um, there, it's going to cost too much money to renovate that space. We passed a bond um a few years ago to put in, to build a new district office, so we're leaving that space. And um, we're trying to see, can we use this facility that's now going to be empty? To generate revenue, an ongoing source of revenue for the school district and not have to go out and levy another parcel tax. Um. And again, we are constantly as a school district thinking of ways to generate revenue. So that we can pay our hardworking educational staff. Um. They work extremely hard for us and they deserve to make a wage where they don't have to worry about cost of living, et cetera, so next slide. So again, just to really talk about this area, um, I'm sure as you all well know, because I know a lot of you are really engaged in the community. I see you at a lot of different events, um, that there is a fiscal stability issue in almost every area of this, of Daly City. And that a lot of our students come to us with a lot of need. So unfortunately, again, we are the school district that have the students with the highest needs but the lowest funding. It doesn't make sense, but that's a reality of situation. And so how can we use the land and the resources that we have to help fill that need? And it's bigger than just being a school district, I mean, we are, provide health services. The Daly City Health Center is a, as a school district organization. Um, we provide mental health services for many of our students and especially now during the COVID nineteen crisis. Our school district was the location for both COVID testing sites in Daly City. One that was community run and one that was county run at the district office and at Jefferson. We were also the location um at our school district for the food distribution, one of the major food distributions. At one time serving over one thousand two hundred people three times a week. We did um vaccinations at our school site. Um, and a lot of these were done through volunteer work efforts of our educational staff. So they do so much more than just educate. They're a vital part of the community that I don't want to see go away. And so I know that sometimes people find me aggressive. But I'm passionate about public education because I know what it's done for me and my family. I'm a single mother, all three of my kids have gone through uh J U H S D, my son has special needs, he was in special education. Only one of my son's teachers that taught him still works in our district. At Westmore, every single principal and vice principal left our school district this year. And we're starting our, our year at Westmore with an entirely new site administration staff. You know. How? How are we supposed to continue at the level that we are working now? And reach the children that we need to reach in various level of socioeconomic need, but we can't be physically stable and viable. And so we know that this project is asking for some sacrifice and that people are going to speak about a garden. But I'm asking to weigh that loss with a potential garden in another area. To the loss of the services that'll take place if we cannot continue to stay physically viable. Um, next slide. So our board worked as a unit and this was just an overarching plan and we talked about, you know, we're looking at the issue of attracting, retaining our educational staff. You know, how do we go about fixing that and we had a three pawn plan, three problem plan, which was we passed a parcel tax, we building the edge of the educator housing. And then how do we use the land? And so this was the place that we thought would be the most viable, it's closest to more um. Public transportation, um, and it has the most potential to provide an adequate level of funding. That will make an impact, I mean, that's one of the most important things when people ask like, why don't you change things or why don't we move things? We want to be able that we're going to go through all this effort to actually bring in enough revenue that'll actually make an impact. And um, you know, be ongoing and we've done this very successfully in the past. You know, some of the buildings that she highlighted in her presentation Carmelisa or buildings that were built. When we did this uh previous years, so we know that this is a model that works. Our full board voted to move forward with these things. We voted four zero and that's because trustee Lee was on vacation, we forgive him for taking a vacation during that vote, but we voted four zero. And then we voted by five zero to move forward with our contractors and I don't, to start with the lead entitlements. Um, and again, the precise plan was submitted on April twenty-second of this year. So um, you know, this is a massive change and we change is hard and with that is always going to come with some detractors. But I'm hoping that you can see the promise in this. And um, you know, we're always open and talking with anybody, be compromised under various areas, our communication with the city. And we're continuing to be open and hearing um different ideas, but the main focus for us is. To maximize a level of revenue so that we can stay, make sure that we can stabilize a fiscal future for our district for, you know. Incoming students and I'll pass it over to trustee Lee.
I think, I think you trustee Salhoudin, if we have the next slide, please. So as spoken to the, to the, uh, to the votes that for, for the board funding the plan. And so in twenty nineteen, we did some early outreach, including speaking to our tenants about the plans for the building. We've spoken to our educators union and then the, and the teachers and staff. We've also spoken to Head Start preschool and of course done the requisite um coordination work that began with the city staff. Um, and then in twenty twenty, city council approved our faculty and staff housing project that is currently under construction. Um, and same time, we continued on this work uh for Ceremony Del Rey. Uh, with the ongoing uh city staff, city uh city meetings with our staff. Uh, as well as our ongoing city council school board subcommittee meetings. We also held assorted community outreaches uh last year. We had neighborhood meetings, we had a city. We had neighborhood meetings, we had a citywide meeting, there'd been a survey. And we've also done some outreach, of course, with Native American Heritage Commission, American Indian Cultural District, and continuing on with the Cultural Resources Study, which all that work has continued on into 2021. With ongoing, again, ongoing subcommittee meetings, staff meetings, as well as what was previously mentioned, the kickoff of the EIA. We've also done some door-to-door outreach in the local community and have continued to have neighborhood resident meetings. And the ongoing cultural outreach, including the Aloni and the Native American Invitation to Consult for AB-18 and SB-52. Moving on to the next slide, please. So as part of the community feedback from the meetings that we had, on the left hand of the slide, you can see what components of the plan that they really did engage in and that they really like. The potential neighborhood retail that's going, that this master plan creates a neighborhood. It's not just a project, it's truly going to be a new, brand-new neighborhood with great design. You can see that the density can work, and this is going to revitalize basically an underutilized property in our city. And also, there will be the connection to nature, outdoor fitness, children's play areas, family-friendly, safe. And the community feedback also indicated that they recognize the need for housing here in Daly City. As to areas of improvement, of course, the ongoing concern with regards to, especially for the neighborhood, potential loss of on-street parking. And certainly, we don't want to impact the neighbors, the increased traffic. There's concern about bike safety, especially along Ceremony Boulevard, as well as new green space. Kalima, I think you wanted to speak to the green space component.
Exactly. I mean, when we went into this, we, you know, again, we know that a lot of our students live in this community, and we would never want to do anything that would be harmful to any of our students or their families. And so this plan doubles the amount of green space. It may not be in the way that certain members would like, but it does double the amount of green space. And we really went into this, you know, thinking like, how can we incorporate as many positives as possible and take as much feedback as possible, as well as to continue to maximize the revenue for the district? So we have the park, we have the unprogrammed green space there, that we're more than open to having another community garden there. We, you know, the, the school district garden, again, we have a history of opening up our property, that's why we're here in the first place. You know, we, the community garden was open to the community because the district allowed community members on school district's property. And we want to continue with that, we want to continue opening up our space, having lots of public space, betrayal, nature, open to the public. But just if folks could be flexible about, you know, where the locations are, we're going to replace any trees that we cut down, et cetera. Where, you know, we are trying to be as environmentally friendly as possible and above and beyond what is normally required. So, you know, we just, again, our focus as a board member and as members of this board is taking care of our students and our schools. And we want to make sure that we can continue to do that. That's all for us, and turning it over to Bruce.
Great, thank you. So I'm just going to highlight a few things, building on Carmelisa's line presentation about the master plan. So this is just looking at the neighborhood context, it's an aerial view. Looking south, you can see Highway 1 in the foreground, and yellow box is the plan area. You know, this location is really an ideal location for being able to create a new neighborhood. It's, in a way, an out-of-sight location, it's a plateau location. But it's a good location for high-density housing because to south of it, you have the Ceremony Ridge Apartments, high-density multifamily. To the north, across Ceremony Boulevard, you also have high-density multifamily housing. Up on St. Francis Boulevard, you have high-density single-family housing. You have a lot of existing trees around the hillside slopes that really help limit views from public areas. And then it has very good transportation access with the high-transit frequency bus service that's on Ceremony Boulevard with 10-minute headways. And then you have the on-and-off ramps to Highway 1, short distance to be able to get to BART and the 280. So it's a very good location for multifamily housing and a new residential. East, we're up above Ceremony Boulevard, over Saint Francis Boulevard, we're looking, you know, to the east. You can see the existing site is 22 acres, hillside setting, you know, former high school site, which has, you know, passed its useful life. And then you can see the initial preparation work that's being done here for the 122-unit faculty and staff housing, which is underway. You know, and there's really two points of access to get it in and out of the site, really from Ceremony Boulevard, Highway 1, on-and-off ramps, and then Campus Drive, which takes out, extends over to Hickey. It's the existing site. And then, you know, we're looking at how to phase development, as was mentioned earlier in the staff presentation. We just want to help you visualize what that, what that is. You know, what's so exciting about the vision for this, this project is it's really about how to create a, you know, a walkable, bikeable, safe, family-friendly neighborhood that has a shopping street, has destination parks and nature trails. And so, you know, as mentioned, you know, you're seeing the faculty and staff housing in the foreground, 122 units. And then across from that, along Ceremony Boulevard is 201 units, some mixed-use residential, building a retail main street. I'm going to talk a little about more of that in a minute. And all that's going to take place while the district offices remain open. So this first phase is going to have several amenities, the neighborhood retail, Cafe Plaza, improved access with the new entry along Ceremony Boulevard. Some improvements for the transit stops that are there, you know, and then it's have Overlook Park, which I'm going to talk about in a second. The second phase of this project, the third phase in the master plan build-out, this is a view, an aerial view looking west, you know, of the project. You know, it's, it's, one of the things that's exciting about this project is the innovative housing solutions are being proposed. You know, our design team has been looking at how to create higher-density housing that's highly livable, urban living. Drawing upon some of the best examples of some of that that's been done along the peninsula. And so the site map in the center shows you kind of orients north up, which shows parcel A, B, as we've numbered them, C, D, and F. And then the aerial view is kind of looking the other way. So you can see along Ceremony Boulevard, you can see the faculty and staff housing. And, you know, we're calling parcel B, the mixed-use housing. And then as you go down the main street entrance, there's going to be a central green. And the next phase of the project's actually going to be along the east side of the site, along, up above Callan. And that's going to be, you know, 100-plus units of affordable housing, dedicated site to work with an affordable housing developer who would have expertise in delivering the services that are necessary to be able to provide affordable housing and support services. That would be next to the relocated Head Start. The district's very committed to keeping Head Start here and helping support them to provide their, continue to provide their services on-site. And then this Class 1 pedestrian bike trail that runs along the woodland on the, on the east side. That's the second phase. And then the third phase is Central Green. It's the 290 units that we're calling parcel E. And then it's the completion of the street network with what we're saying is parcel F, which is a building that's on, towards the St. Francis Boulevard. That's another 288 units of housing, and then some recreational walking trails that are part of that. So with the build-out, you know, there's going to be, you know, 1,235 units for the entire project, including the faculty and staff housing. And we're looking at having two 14-story residential structures that can be other on parcel, you know, D, E, or F. We're looking at that. All parking is provided on-site, you know, 1.5 to 1.7 spaces, you know, per unit. And the whole street network is designed as a complete streets, you know, network. There's a Class 1 trail bike, residential bike, pedestrian trail on streets. We're having Class 2 bike lanes plus Class 2 buffered bike lanes. So there's thruway, we're able to go from Ceremony all the way to Campus Drive on bikes safely. And then there's going to be Class 3, sort of shallow streets, also in the neighborhood. So there's complete bicycle-friendly streets, and it's traffic calm in terms of the design. We have stop control intersections and a roundabout by the Summit Chester School for helping slow traffic down as you go through the neighborhood. Just a couple of images to kind of show you the architectural character of what's going on. This is sort of the first phase, is a view of faculty and staff housing from Ceremony Boulevard. Very excited about it, you know, some individual entries is the entrance actually to the, to the, to the housing. There's some improvements to upgrade the transit stop that's, that's on the street there. You know, this is the, this is going to be the vision at the intersection of Highway 1, on-and-off ramps and Ceremony Boulevard, Entry Drive, we're calling it Entry Place. You know, it's creating an urban entrance to the, to the neighborhood. It's going to be a new entrance, really, to the city as you get on and off, off the freeway. It's going to, you know, have the, you know, make some improvements to the transit stop right there. But it's going to create an urban place and identity for, for, for the neighborhood. And it's a place that serves not just the project, but the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of having a walkable destinations tree-lined, you know, pedestrian environment with ground floor, you know, retail. When you go down, you know, Entry Drive, that street really is going to be like a pocket main street. Shops can spill outdoors, you know, be tree-lined, there'll be convenience stores that'll be there, where you can kind of imagine kind of what would make parts of your daily life, you know, attractive to take a minute to go out. You would have, you know, cafe, maybe deli, special foods, flowers, ATM, exercise studio, and other things like that. They could really make that an attractive place, and that sidewalk, especially designed, it's a deeper sidewalk, to really make it walkable and pedestrian-oriented. And then as you look on the right, you can see the view that takes you out to the, what we're calling Overlook Park. This is Overlook Park, this is all part of the first phase. You know, we heard a lot from community outreach around having a neighborhood park, having a family-friendly, having kid recreational facilities. So this is a view kind of looking to the east. The streets up on the left, there's a series of terraces where you can have outdoor seating and places to picnic. There's play areas for kids, it's connected to the Class 1 bike pedestrian trail, so it links the transit stop up to the Summit Chester School. And then it's got some lawn areas for passive, you know, recreation, you know, and seating and benches. And that's kind of the quality of environment that we're envisioning, we're seeing the parcel B housing behind, in the background, that has a, you know, terrace, some ground floor used to come out and activate the space. So those are kind of the features that we're very, very excited about with this project. And we have our, you know, entire project team here available to answer any questions that you might have, or if there's anything you want to explore in greater detail. So I just want to say thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruce. Anybody else who would like to talk? Okay. So, getting done. Anyway, during the deliberation, you're going to be asked. So my colleagues, my panel commissioners, who wants to ask question about this project?
May I speak a moment?
Go ahead, Ms. Belva.
No, I was asking Teresa.
Teresa, how are you? Welcome. I haven't, okay, Teresa, go ahead.
So I just reiterating that this, all this housing is for primarily, entirely for teachers, administrators, staff, anything to do with the school system, correct? So if somebody was a, you know, a PE teacher or an office person or someone who, you know, who did maintenance, this would be open to every one of them? And, and this is, is this more, is this purchase, is this, I'm trying to remember, I'm sorry, more rental? I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer some of those questions. I mean, this is, you know, it's, the faculty and staff housing is dedicated to faculty and staff. And the remainder of the housing is going to be mixed-income housing, it's rental housing. So, you know, it's not specifically designated for, you know, district staff or faculty. It would be open for, in the marketplace for, for people to be able to access and use.
I'm sorry, what is the percentage of, what is the percentage of school and for teachers and such percentage to the other housing? So what's the difference? So?
Yeah. It's about 10% is dedicated to faculty and staff. 122 units out of the 1,235.
Now, why would that be? I mean?
Just to clarify, the workforce housing is a different project. So the workforce housing is 100% dedicated to our workforce. This is market rate housing that we are proposing development of to generate revenue for the school district. So, so in one, one area, we're housing our teachers to help with retracting and retaining them. But not all of our teachers are going to be able to live there, our staff are going to be able to live there. So we just need to be able to raise revenue for everyone, and so this is a way to generate revenue. Does that make sense?
It, no, it totally makes sense. It's just the numbers. I mean, you're talking a little over 100 for housing for not just teachers. Because I understand that when this came to us, to the planning commission, you know, if it's a maintenance, maintenance person, an office person, a teacher, and just asking why 100 and, what did you say, 26? I'm sorry?
22.
122 condos, apartments, whatever you want to say, are dedicated to, to the teachers. But then there's almost what, 2,000 other housing that would just be open to anyone? And I'm just curious on why the number is so low.
Well, when we reached out to our teachers and staff to ask who would want to live in housing that we provided, it was much less than the number of units that we built. So we lose about a third of our staff every single year. So we built housing for a third of our staff, but really, when we put out the initial ask to see who would want to stay there, we only got, you know, about 100 people that were interested. So we're, we would, if we built a whole lot more, there wouldn't be the need for many, for people in our workforce. So we only built what we needed.
I understand, but I'm just playing devil's advocate, okay? So if we're trying to attract people, right? We're trying to attract people, the hardest thing is housing. And that's in any business in Daly City or in the Bay Area, it's housing. So where someone might want to come here, they say, look, I can't afford it. And so I'm just concerned that the site, your, your choice of right now, we only need 122. Whereas, I'm just throwing it out there, where, where you may, you know, have double that, and you might be able to, or even one and a half of them. And you may be able to attract people from other places of the United States or the world to come here and teach and share their craft. That's all, it just doesn't, to me, I, I, I think it's, I don't want to, it's a little short-sighted, is all.
So the other issue is the affordability, we can't afford to build more, much more. So we have to take a loan out to build the housing. So there's only so much money that we can take out via loan and not make a huge, put the district in huge fiscal risk if something would happen. Because the way we pay back the loan is through the rents. And if we're not able to, if we're not able to absolutely fill every single apartment, we won't be able to pay back the loan. So it was a huge fiscal risk for us to build 122 units when only half of those, when we only got, when we only got feedback that our teachers and staff, only half of that amount was interested in living there. So we did overbuild in building 122 units. To build more than that, not guaranteeing that every single apartment would be filled, if any apartments were empty, the district would be on the hook to pay for those empty things. And so the plan is to increase our revenue, not put us in some fiscal jeopardy to where we're going to be on the hook, losing revenue in another area.
I understand. And the other question is, so these other, so you designated this many, 122 for the teachers or the staff, or whomever. And then the rest of them, you're going to be renting. And you still own them so that if, if it becomes profitable and as rents increase or whatever happens, and you're paying this loan, eventually, you would be able to take some of the other housing and bring it into for the, for, for teachers. you would be able to take some of the other housing and bring it into for the, for, for teachers or for whatever.
If I could jump in for a moment, um, this is Andy Lee, J H S D board as well. Uh, there's a couple, a couple of things. I, I know Tricia Prano, you're, I know your focus on faculty and staff housing of which we are currently under construction at a hundred twenty-two units, but the project that's before you is for roughly twelve hundred units, uh, in which there's an additional ten percent of that, which will be also designated as affordable. What we're trying to do with the land that we have here is to entitled, entitled this as well as then ultimately the, have the, have developers come in, develop market rate and affordable housing on this site. The, and, and, and the district would be able to generate revenues in, in that partnership.
May I ask?
Uh, Rick, Rick, you can, you can ask the question now.
Yeah, I would address this to Kalima and Andy. Uh, the way I understand this project, when you get to the later phases down the way, uh, if you had discovered you had a need for additional uh, faculty, staff, uh, housing, some of these rental units could be converted at that time to that purpose, correct?
No, I think if we are leasing the land out to the developer, it's to, it's the developer who would decide who gets to move in and who gets to move out, and we just generate revenue. We have other land in other areas. So if this housing fills up, we can use some of our space in Pacifica to build additional workforce housing. But you know, one of the people that we use as a model that did this extremely successfully is this, uh, the San Mateo Community College. And they built in much smaller phases than we built, we built. I mean, they built like, uh, their first housing unit, Andy, I don't know, jumping, I think it was like sixty-five units or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, so we built double the amount that the community college built in anticipation of having more people who wanted to live in the housing than actually spoke up and said they wanted to. Um, and again, if, if this fills up and we need to build more and there's a huge demand, we have other places to do that. But but we have like four hundred and fifty employees and this is going to house a hundred and twenty-two of them. It's a huge percentage of our employees that are going to be able to live there. Secondly, not every employee wants to move here. I mean, some already have housing and they're just struggling to pay their mortgage, et cetera. And so we need to address all of our teachers and staff, not just the ones that are able to move in here. And then we're also talking about, you know, the ability to pay for things that are not directly tied to staff. So being able to pay for different programs, pay for music. Right now, one of the things that I hate is that most of our music and teachers have to fundraise in order to do their, to, to do their art program. So our band had to have, I believe it was the Lions bought their uniforms because we couldn't afford to do it. Um, you know, it, it makes me sad when I see our kids travel to other areas to compete and they don't have the level of equipment, et cetera, because we just can't provide it. So it's, it's it's a whole plethora of things that we just want to be able to provide an equitable education, the same as any other student in San Mateo County.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Belba?
Uh.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, is the massing, um, confirmed? Because I noticed that is the two of the sites are going to be fourteen stories tall. Is that correct?
Say that again.
Uh, it looks like there are two site, two of the sites will have fourteen stories. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. They could build up to that.
Oh, build up to it, but that's not confirmed. I guess my concern is that if you're creating a neighborhood environment, I believe over ten stories makes it high rises, right? So it kind of changed the, you know, the feel of the community. I guess I would reconsider maybe lowering or keeping it, um, at a minimum.
Uh, and I'm gonna, may I, I, I'm gonna agree, because again, you're bringing thousands of people into Daly City and, um, we probably, uh, and right, we are like the most populated city, you know? And, um, I know it's over ten or fifteen years or however long this, oops, project is. Uh, wait a second, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, right, okay. So, but the thing is, is you know, just to be fair, you know, just for the community and the city of Daly City, that's a lot of, that's a, a lot, a lot of people. And when you say units that you could have two or three, so we're talking four or five thousand people more in the city of Daly City. Um, I noticed that, uh, the, uh, bus stops, are you guys going to be working to try to have a bus stop closer to this specific area? I mean, when I was looking, when you guys were indicating where the, you know, freeways are, um, there, uh, I, it seemed, and maybe I'm wrong, that the bus stops were quite far away. Um, but yeah, I, 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 I do see where people are concerned, or we had a concern with regards to uh, population. That's a lot of people. And that could potentially be a lot of cars and potentially just a lot of lot more people in city of Daly City. And we're, we're busted at the seams as it is. So just give my comment.
Okay, uh, anything else? Gary, you have a question?
Uh, I have a question about the, about the bike lanes. Uh, can you please, uh, there was something said in the meeting about, um, a bike trail from Cermoni to Campus Drive. Is that what I heard correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it will, it, it, okay, because that's like kind of across the street from there. Okay, so, because the, the reason why I brought that up is because there's a lot of concern about, uh, about the bikes where, you know, they're concerned about safety. So, um, um, is that what, um, okay, I don't know. Okay, so, okay, it's fine. You, uh, talked to him.
Well, no, Gary, Gary, can I add to that? I think because there was a concern, a comment, a public comment uh, about the driveway that's entering Cermoni Boulevard.
Right, uh, that was the one that they talked about that it was close, it's too close to the freeway entrance?
Yeah, and it might be unsafe. And so my question would be, is that a required egress? Because all the other buildings don't, don't seem to have a secondary egress from, from the other building, uh, from their building.
Okay, so that is also my question later on, but, uh, I'm going to make a follow-up question on that, Belba. So, uh.
I mean, would you, would you like me to answer that question, or do you want to?
I, I would like to amplify my question, because, uh, you will notice that Cermoni Boulevard is a heavy traffic one. It's a main, main wa- main road going to the freeway, three eighty, egress, egress. So the point here of the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is to remove the curb on Cermoni Boulevard for the safety of everyone, because this is the main road. So we have to change really, uh, the configuration and probably you could put this in Calan Boulevard than in, than in, uh, Cermoni. If you are going to pass by Cermoni Boulevard going to the freeway, it is always heavy traffic there. Just now, just go there. You will like. That's why, uh, if you're going to build this bas- infrastructure, this seat to it that you have to you're going to have a stop sign signage into that area, otherwise there will be a, a ruckus in that area. So you have to think about also the the ingress, egress of going inside, outside Cermoni. So I am going to suggest that later on to, to remove this curb as as I would say recommended by the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I will sustain that. Anyway, yeah, any more question before I go to the public hearing? And one more question. Is your concept more of?
Uh, did he freeze?
Hello? Who, who is that? Okay. Uh, is this purely rental or there is also a ownership to this, uh, building? Can, can Kalami, Kalivas allowed it answer that? Because you were the one saying, speaking a lot a while ago. Can you answer?
No worries. So this is rental, um, you know, in talking to the city, they were, you know, looking at us to do rental. Um, so this is predominantly, I mean, not predominantly, this is all rental.
Because I was thinking about the concept of Stanford, the university, where in front of them, it's a housing. The priority is those who are only teaching in, in Stanford. That is why this, this base of, uh, housing project in Stanford is so that is easy, especially for those who are working as a professor in Stanford. So it, this is not the concept of the Stanford, Kaliba? No.
Um, so that um, so for our workforce housing, we are working with a program that would help our, uh, that our residents and our employees that are living in the workforce housing, and also employees that are working for us now buy housing. So we are thinking about like rental to home ownership. So that's the whole purpose of our workforce housing, is that the money that they save on the rents would go to saving for a home. And now we're working with a program that helps with funding so that once they're finished living in our workforce housing, they have the money to buy a home.
Yes, that, that's the concept also in Stanford. You know, American dream is, you know, owning a house, owning a car, something like that. It should be a part of the American dream, which I, we are thinking about.
Yeah, so that is.
Rental is just a variety in nature.
Yeah, that's our thought process, absolutely, when it comes to our workforce.
Okay, uh, any more question?
Well, I'd like to just piggyback on Velba. Um, I you know, fourteen stories. I mean, where else are we like that in Daly City? I mean, it's, I, I, it just seems too much, too high, too, uh, it, it, the when you saw the video, the photos and the rendering, everything seemed so, uh, you know, like you could walk around and play in the grass and all this. And then you see these, you know, fourteen stories or even ten. Um, I don't know. Where else in Daly City, Michael? Would you say we would have such, uh, be, uh, in Daly City?
High rise?
We don't have buildings that are that tall currently, although, um, Cermoni Views was approved, I believe, at thirteen stories. So there are approved projects at that height. Um, the site can accommodate taller buildings just due to the upslope of adjacent, uh, land. Um, it would seem to, you know, fit into that context and that for that reason, staff supports, uh, that number of stories. It's important also for the planning commission to realize that Daly City is faced with a very large arena coming up. Um, it's a recent regional housing need allocation number that is handed down, um, from A Bag to the city. And the city is mandated by state law to provide zoned land for that number of units. And so this, uh, type of a project and this number of units would put a pretty decent dent in that in terms of us, um, you know, allowing it in terms of just zoning for it. So that is, uh, something important also to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you, Bram. Uh, I would like to say that, uh, I, I am in, in agreement with the the, the Jefferson University to put up that kind of high rise, because this place is, uh, a top dollar. And especially if we're going, just rented out, you really need to, to put up, development should go up. And I agree, because even in San Francisco, everything is going up now. It's, eh, eh, that, that's kind of the development we are going forward. We, we know that a, a population is growing, population is really everywhere, but this is a city where in comfort and location is now the state. And, and I I will agree with it with Michael here saying that they can be allowed, because we need more space going up. Especially San Francisco, we have, uh, everything going up, because the location is very important. Very near the airport, very near the mall, very near the church, every, everywhere, very near. And it's a matter of trying to, uh, adjust to where we are as a, a, as a resident of this, for as long as they can provide the necessary, uh, parking, traffic is well adjusted. And it's a matter of adjustment, but, uh, anyway, Daly City, they wanted to be a bedroom community for some. Not really to, just like in some areas in Detroit, where after a while it was a mess. I hope it, it will not happen that way. So that's my, 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 uh, my only my take.
Well, I agree with, uh, the chair, uh, very simply. I don't think we have any choice. There isn't much land left here. We have to go.
We don't have anymore.
Direction available.
That is sometimes, uh, the dilemma here in, in, in highly, highly urbanized place. We have to go up. And for as long as parking, traffic, and the sanitation is well addressed, I, I agree. I agree with that. There, there's nothing wrong about. Okay, yes, Gary, do you have any question?
Oh, no, I just said I, I totally agree with what you're saying.
Okay, okay. Because that is the only way, especially if it's a rental. Uh, people come and go out, we say rental after about three years, four years, they go, I mean, go and put up their own house. That's part of the American dream anyway. Going ahead, uh, had any more question before I open this to the public hearing? Getting done, any motion to have this, uh, public hearing open? Any motion for public hearing?
Motion to allow the, uh, public hearing to, for the, are, are we opening it up now?
Yes, we are opening it up.
I'll make a motion.
There are a lot of people who wants to talk about this.
Um, so I'll just interject here. It looks like we have four raised hands, um, or now it's, uh, five, six.
Okay, so.
Uh, seven.
One more.
I, I, what I can do is I'm going to go in order.
Go ahead, uh, Ms. Tatum.
The last, um, raised hand I have is Eric Blemsey. Uh, so after we call on Eric Blemsey, if there's additional raised hands, it'll be, um, up to the chair to decide if there, um, will be further public comment. Um, the comment, uh, time is two minutes and I will be using my timer. Um, and it'll have a little bell that'll go off when the two minutes is up. So, um, the first speaker, uh, that I have listed here is Nick Ochupenty.
Go ahead, Mr. Nick.
Thank you.
Your record best word.
All right. So I will read my public comments from, uh, the one I submitted today. Um, in addition to the letter I submitted prior to the planning division for the environmental impact report regarding this project. Um, as an elected member of the J U H S D Board of Trustees, I continue to voice strong concerns around this project, which have lacked transparency at virtually every step of the way. And in light of this project, which has lacked transparency, uh, uh, and the lack of due diligence on this project. My original concerns stem from a clearly irresponsible and outdated approach to urban development. In addition to the lack of good faith communication and collaboration with myself as a trustee, as well as the public here in Daly City and throughout our school district. This process has been fast-tracked to your desk for your approval. I would strongly caution your consideration of this project at this point and encourage seeking and including wider community input, which has not been conducted and instead circumvented procedurally by advancing this project's planning and development during a pandemic. I would, of course, encourage referencing policy directives and vision at the state and federal level, all of which advise a completely different approach to development, one I believe you will agree with upon further review. Thank you in advance for your deliberation on this. And here is my letter that I submitted prior. This letter is in reference to Cermoni, the Cermoni Delray Campus Redevelopment Project, which has been proposed as an expansion of the existing Cermoni Delray Faculty and Staff Housing Project previously approved by Jefferson Union, High School District, and the city of Daly City. The existing project is approximately one-sixth of the entire parcel of land that is being proposed for the development, the current site of the J U H S D District Office and several tenants, including educational, cultural, religious, and recreational agencies and entities based here in the Daly City area. This project arrives at this stage as a development of the initiative of two members of our J U H S D Board of Trustees on our facility subcommittee in consultation with a real estate firm, Brookwood. on our Facility Subcommittee in consultation with a real estate firm, Brookwood Advisors. As a member of the J U H S D Board Trustees, I am the only trustee not in agreement with the proposed project, given the lack of transparency, community engagement, and participation in the planning process thus far, compounded by the myriad concerns related to the adverse environmental and social impacts it would have on our community as presented. It is in this spirit that, as the only member to have voted against the project and at this stage of the process, am compelled to share my concerns as echoed by existing and projected directives in public policy upholding and promoting environmental protection at federal, state, regional, and local levels. In step with the E I R process, I will focus this input to include recommendations of the community and stakeholders who have voiced similar concerns, including transparency, accountability, and responsibility in ensuring best practices in sustainable land use planning in urban areas, particularly here in Daly City, North San Mateo County, and the Greater S F Bay Area. The proposed project has been reviewed with limited access to information at all levels of input and oversight thus far. I can say that for myself, I have been limited, I have been limited access to the full context and details of conversations and correspondence carried out by the Facility Subcommittee of our school district. Despite repeated requests for information, I've only been provided limited access to this information as evidenced by multiple school board meetings, which should be referenced in reviewing environmental considerations for this report.
Please wait, uh, finish your.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, just uh, write it up, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I will simply conclude by saying this, and my comments should be included in the packet, so the public should be able to access this online. Um, I will look forward to seeing it posted on the city website for the Planning Commission uh, agenda and packet. I know that it's not always posted, but I will look forward to seeing that. Um, I will simply conclude by saying this. Um, it should be noted that this current Ceremai Del Ray Faculty and Staff Housing Project has already removed approximately ninety trees, um, including those which were in good health, um, given the limits of the design provided by the agencies working in consultation with J U H S D.
You, you can just say, send us, Nick, can you, you can just send us all those briefings, okay? We will publish, okay? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is uh, Debbie Santiago and just uh, the pleasure of the chair. Uh, would you like me to be a little louder at the two minutes? I'm trying to be respectful, but also wanting to make sure we're maintaining the two.
Yes, uh, if you, if you have a timer there, because uh, okay, I normally allow anybody for as long as, but there are a lot of speakers who wants to talk, so. We, we are going to implement the Robert rules, okay?
Our next speaker is Debbie Santiago.
Yes, hello. I am a Washo descent from Nevada, California tribe, and I also represent the elders of the Aloneye community. And I'm also the advisory committee of the American Indian Cultural Center and Elders Coalition of the Cultural District in San Francisco, since there is none in Daly City. And I also live over there at Ceremai Del Ray, and the parking I want to say is atrocious. You only get one parking space and then you have um, maybe free-for-all outside. If you own more than one car, then it's, it's very difficult. And for myself, I am here to concern about the gardens because those high rises will destroy that garden on partial F. And they've already have taken away the trees. There is no guarantee on that um, green space land that these trees and herbs and plants, we have more than half that are there. Also, um, I have done a petition and, and I have a little over seven hundred and fifty who are against this project. We're not against the housing, we're just against what we call equal friendly land. This garden is unlike any other one. So we urge you at this time to reconsider at least looking at other alternatives. Because how many green spaces do you have in Daly City? There was also something written up on K Q E D about Daly City and hardly no green space. I did have some kind of meeting with the uh, school district to look at the green space, but that is not even be gonna be comparable with the head. And also at the same time, they wanted to throw in some other amenities, but at this time, the elders are rejecting that at this moment. And also, there should have been other plans. And I think this uh, high rise that you're gonna do for high prices should be included with the other buildings that you have there and really looking at a bigger picture of the garden.
It's two minutes.
Okay, thank you. The next, uh,
Our next speaker is Sabrina Brennan.
Go ahead, this, you recognize.
Hi, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here representing the Loma Piedad Sierra Club Equity Committee. And we submitted a four-page letter today. We also submitted a uh, letter regarding the N O P. Um, so that, that was submitted some time ago. Hopefully you had a chance to read.
We got it, we got it. Let me sub breathe then.
Okay, great. So one of our big concerns is about public health. Uh, it's being negatively impacted uh, because of the lack of green space in Daly City. There are statistics to back this up. Uh, the green spaces is um, not adequate for the number of people living in Daly City. This is a very big problem and this is a chief reason that Daly City leaders should be pushing back on um, more density. Uh, there is a severe imbalance of green space in Daly City that must be addressed. The rest of the county has parks, gardens, and green space. Daly City is extremely noticeably deficient in these areas. And we urge you to work with the county to develop a um, plan for parks and recreational opportunities and green space and more trees and a community gardening program throughout the city. So we hope you will take those things seriously going forward. Um, we also like to let you know that we uh, oppose the preliminary plan and we would ask you to please deny the subdivision map plan for Ceramante Del Ray. So we ask you to please oppose the preliminary plan and deny the sub- subdivision map plan for Ceramante Del Ray. Um, it converts a public use into a polluting private use. The project should be designed with fewer fewer tall buildings.
Next speaker, please.
Uh, the next speaker is Jennifer Pfefflede.
How are you, Miss? Jennifer.
Yes, nice to see uh, you. Thank you for um, having us. Uh, I am here on behalf of Izzy, formerly I H S D. We run the Head Start Program for the county and we have a site at the Ceremai Del Ray Campus. And I'm here on behalf of our agency to express overall support for the project. Um, we have been working collaboratively with J U H S D for this project and they have really taken into account the needs of our program and the needs of the community. We serve the highest need children in the county, um, the lowest income, children with special needs and children at risk of neglect and abuse. And so, um, we, our program is very committed in the county and we are very pleased to be included in the proposal. Um, not in this one specifically, in, in a different one, but overall, we, we support the um, the proposal. We appreciate the site that was selected for, um, for our program. It's in a good location at the site, which would be right adjacent to the affordable housing. And that would allow us to serve the residents of the affordable housing site um, as well as to continue to serve the broader community, um, which we have done in partnership um, with the school district, um, on their land for, for twenty plus years. Um, the site is centrally located to the families we serve in Daly City and is an ideal spot um, for our services to be offered. Um, we appreciate the, the walking trails that would be along the parcels to provide um, walkways for families that take public transportation to our site. And then other general enhancements to the site, like the Overlook Park and the retail space could be accessed by our staff on their break times, um, or before, after their shift and our families as well. And for.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker.
Um, our next speaker is Ed Lopez.
Welcome, Mr. Ed Lopez.
Well, thank you. Um, I'm a uh, twenty-five-year or twenty-seven-year veteran of the, uh, school district. Um, I'm in support of this as a student, hopefully to be retiring teacher. I'm looking forward to development of this district to improve my retirement and also to have the opportunity to um, mentor our younger teachers coming through. In regards to um, the garden, I was there when the garden was built. I helped build it. It was an empty lot. It was built out of sheer boredom. Um, and my, my students helped, you know, we helped build some of the beds. It wasn't any special place. It was just a it was basically a public dump for a long time. So just wanted to know that was that. Um, it's also in regards to access to public space, um, there is lots of access to public space in Daly City. There's this place called um, San Bruno Mountain. I don't know if you guys have heard of it. But um, the public space is amazing there. The green space, it's pretty green. Well, it's kind of brown right now, but it's really green. And so I just want to say that um, I'm in full support of this development and the support that it'll give to our staff. I'm, you know, tired of being the the um, oldest teacher in the district because everybody else is retiring. And I really haven't been there that long, so. Or everybody else is leaving because they can't afford to live in this. And it's, it's kind of sad to see the, the district, um, the teaching staff just leave um, because we can't afford to, uh, can't afford to pay teachers. It's, and I want to thank the um, the administration for being completely open on how this is developed. If, if I could pay attention, know what's going on, I think everybody else can. Um, it's been amazing and I just want to uh, give a particular shout out to Miss Van Rapport for her complete openness on the financial um, impact on this. And, and all the super, previous superintendents that we've had. And so, um, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ed Lopez. Uh, next.
Our next speaker is Monica Casey.
Go ahead, Miss Monica.
Hi, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Monica Casey and I'm the president of A F T fourteen eighty-one, which is the union that represents most of the faculty and staff of the Jefferson Union High School District, um, about four hundred and fifty people. And I want you to know that um, the union is in full support of this Ceremai Del Ray development plan. We're excited to see the area of Ceramante Del Ray change from what it is now. It's very hideous. Um, and especially with the staff housing. You know, we're really excited about the plan creating an improved lifestyle um, for our workers, our students, and our community. Um, this will give them retail markets, stores, twice as much green space that's currently there. Um, thank you for your time and I just want to let you know that we support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Monica. Okay, next.
Our next speaker is Melissa Ambrose.
You recognize, Miss Melissa. Good evening to you.
Hello, um, I'm Melissa Ambrose. Um, thank you for having me speak. I am the wellness coordinator for Jefferson Union High School District, which means um, I oversee the mental health programming for the district. And what I've come here to say is that um, because our district is in a low-income area and we pay much less than the districts surrounding us, we lose, as you heard from um, board member Salah Houdin, many staff members every year. And what, from a mental health perspective, this is a trauma-inducing practice, not a trauma-reducing practice. And it is a profoundly inequitable issue because districts that have higher pay keep staff longer, including mental health staff and teachers, any staff, administrators, who students become attached to and make connections to. And we know, research shows that when students feel safe and connected to school, they are able to learn better. And I think as all of you know who live in Daly City, we have a population of young people who need tremendous amount of support. And our school district provides almost wraparound services, as you heard um, board member Salah Houdin speak of, that we provide far more than teaching. We have a, a strong mental health staff, but we had to replace several of our staff this year. Every year, we have to do that because they simply cannot afford to stay in the district. And so what this project will do will provide revenue to increase salaries, to retain staff. And that, there's nothing better that you can do for the young people of Daly City who deserve as much as the young people who live in central and southern San Mateo County. There is absolutely no reason they should get less. An absolutely school funding issue statewide is a major problem and we can't resolve that issue here tonight. There's no question that that's true. There's also no question that green space is healthy for people. But we have a population of young people in Daly City who are, in my opinion, largely ignored. Thank you.
So thank you. Next speaker.
Um, our next speaker is Melinda Hugh.
Melinda, you recognize.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Melinda. Um, I'm currently a resident of Daly City. I live up the block from Ceramante Del Ray. I currently work um, as a transportation planner at S F M T A and I'm currently a member of the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Um, I wanted to say I am very excited for the potential of a new pedestrian-oriented neighborhood like Bay Meadows in San Mateo. And I am excited for the opportunity to provide much-needed housing for the city and the region. Um, however, as a member of the B pack, I am opposed to the new curb cut and driveway to access retail parking for parcel B. Um, I included a graphic earlier today in my email to the planning commissioners that. So I don't think we need that driveway or retail parking. If you look at the neighborhood retail in the Bay Meadows project, um, you know, where the blue bottle, the ice cream place is, the on-street parking in the neighborhood inside the project itself sufficiently serves the um, retail space. So I think just the new driveway is too close to the freewheel on-ramp and it's really poses a danger to pedestrians and bicycles. And it's really goes against the kind of whole point of the project, which is to create a walkable um, bike-friendly neighborhood. So I respectfully request that the planning commission remove the Ceramante Boulevard driveway to parcel B. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melinda. Next speaker.
Um, our next speaker is Eric Lemsey.
Go ahead, Mr. Eric. You recognize.
Thank you. Thank you for uh, allowing me to uh, speak. Uh, I got my own timer set up, so I'll make sure I, I keep it right there on the dot. I'm gonna tell you a personal story because I'm a teacher. I'm a social science teacher uh, at Jefferson Union High School District. I teach A P Psychology. I teach A P U S History and I teach Sociology. And I've been in the district for about eleven years. And for about ten of those years, I've had to work second jobs to make ends meet. That includes multiple years where I had to deliver pizzas. Not just on weekends, but on days that I worked at schools. And I could tell you, I'm, I'm a pretty good teacher. Uh, I love what I do and I will not trade that for another career or job as long as I live. But, you know, for most of my career, I've been hanging on by a thread um, to live here, to work here. And I want to stay in this district. I love this district. The students are absolutely wonderful. But a few years ago, this, the school district board had a meeting with us and I told them this story and Tina Van Rapport came up with a solution with the board to create this, this housing project that can retain our teachers. And I, I can, you know, echo everything that everyone in favor of this uh, project has said before me. But, you know, one thing I do want to point out is that this is a transparent project. I have seen nothing but transparency. I know for a fact that I am not an expert on housing development uh, or planning or zoning or anything like that, but I do know enough as a critical thinker to know that everyone involved in this project has been more than transparent with the community uh, and with the Daly City Planning Commission uh, and, and our district employees. And, and I gotta say, you know, a big thank you to everyone who's involved in this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eric. Okay, next.
Um, so that was the last speaker. Um, so that was the last speaker when we opened the public hearing, but we've had two people raise their hands since that time. So will the chair?
Go ahead, yeah. You recognize them mentally, yeah.
Okay, so our next speaker is Jonathan Crup.
Good evening, Jonathan. Nice to see you. Yeah.
Thank you so very much for having me here. I just had a short letter to read. Dear members of the planning.
You're giving ten minutes.
Thank you so much. Dear members of the planning commission and distinguished guests, I am speaking to you this evening in support of the Cerro Monte del Rey Development Project. I've been a teacher of the Jefferson Union High School District for twelve years. It is no secret that we are the lowest-paid district in the peninsula. I, for one, would be making forty-eight thousand dollars a year more if I were teaching in the San Mateo Union High School District. I stay in the JUHSD because for me, the pros of being here far outweigh that extra pay. That being said, neither myself nor any of my colleagues would pass up the opportunity to make extra money. The Cerro Monte del Rey project development seems like the godsend that we have been waiting for. It would at the least shrink the regrettable and glaring pay disparity that has plagued our district for years. I recognize that no project is perfect. However, this one seems to, the pros far outseem to weigh its cons. Please, we ask you, I ask you, to move forward with the Cerro Monte del Rey project. Thank you so very much for your time. I also have to give a quick shout out to my colleague, Mr. Lemsey. I one hundred percent agree with everything that he just said. So, thank you very much for your time.
He still have thirty seconds. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'll let someone else.
Um, our next speaker is Andrew Humbray.
Go ahead, Mr. Humbray. You recognize.
All right, hey, thank you, Paul.
Are you a teacher also?
Uh, yes, I am a teacher at Westmore High School.
You look like a student to me.
But I am a teacher at Westmore High School and I'm with my fiancee. She works at the SFUSD District. And we just had a couple of questions moving forward with this project. One is, as you move forward with this project, who is part of the housing committee? And what are the requirements for staff to live in these units? I think the concern for me is just, you know, building this community with the community, right? Trying to sustain this cultural wealth. Yes, on paper, it looks good, but you want to sustain people who are going to be invested in this community, people who are invested in this community, and how are they going to be tended to? You know, if we, if we don't have enough units. So those are my questions that hopefully they'll be answered as a project moves forward.
And in addition to what Andrew was saying, we heard a lot of, obviously, we are in support of this this project, but I think that.
There is an echo, echo. Okay, go ahead.
Kind of. Build wealth within this community. What, what if?
Can you go near the, your?
Some of the retail space is like, oh, sorry. What if the retail space, some of the retail space is allotted to the, to building like a cultural center for the native native people that in alignment with the, the garden. So maybe like, I don't know.
Is it working? Okay.
Okay, so what I was saying is.
That's better.
What if some of the retail space was allotted to a cultural center? That would be for the, the native people be like with the garden. So like, it could be.
Uh, we'll just send an email. Sorry, sorry about.
You can just write a letter to the. For clarification, because this is just a two-minutes message. So, eh, next speaker, please.
Um, it looks like our last speaker, uh, our next speaker is Clayton Koo.
Clayton Koo, you recognize. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, commissioners and city staff. My name is Clayton Koo and I am a lifelong resident of Daly City. I've grown up here my entire life and I live pretty much blocks away from the Cerro Monte del Rey project being proposed by the high school district. And personally, I'm a proud supporter of the project. I think in many ways, it does wonders for our community and it does wonders for everybody who wants to live here in terms of addressing issues of affordable housing, providing green space for all of us to live, making it even more transit-friendly. It's pretty much right by a freeway route. It's close to bus routes access. There are two bus routes currently within walking distance of that location. It is accessible to shopping and retail. And in many ways, it actually is a great center point for providing Daly City a meeting place, but also providing the district, which can be able to provide and give teachers and staff resources, additional salaries, and actually just helps meet the needs of our students and our community. So I would like to ask the planning commission to proudly support and move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koo. Are there any other speakers? No more?
That is the last speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we are going to close the public hearing. Any motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved a second there that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now.
Here, this is Carmelissa. Just a quick question. Um, we did, we did receive a public comment through the chat. I don't know if we should read that into the record or just.
You can just read the, just the highlights. That's okay. So we can recognize them. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, sure. Um, so, uh, this is from Denise Bibiano. She said that she has lived in Daly City for fifty years and then will never be able to live in Daly City at what I make in JUHSD. I am a single mother of two and I live with my parents in my childhood home. This is a good thing and a beautiful project. Do it. Keep staff working in our schools. Daly City will keep growing with or without this project. So let's be a positive part of it. And that's the end of the comment.
Anything else, I think? Okay.
There, just so the commission's aware, there has been some, some chatting between some of the attendees regarding the open space. So it doesn't look like it's so much a public comment, but just a dialogue back and forth.
Oh, okay. I can see it here, the chat. Okay. But for those who are interested to make some comments, just send it us, send to the planning division and we'll see to it that we recognize it. And in fact, uh, I, I remember also my mother was a teacher in economics. So I am very, very empathized with the teachers. I know where you are. Okay, thank you. And it's been moved a second there that we closed the public hearing. Now we recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Recommend that the city council approve the preliminary plan for the proposed land development of PD dash zero four twenty-one dash zero one four nine nine seven. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved a second there that we are recommend the city council approve the preliminary plan for the proposed land development. Roll call, please.
Tom?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Proanio?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes. Okay, it's unanimous. So thank you very much.
I just, just because there was a considerable amount of public comment. We expect this item to go to city council for review on September thirteenth. So if anybody.
September, September thirteen?
So if there are any members of the public who also want to put in public comment at that time, that meeting will be available.
You can make your pros and cons to the city council. So for those who are interested to, this is very important because we are just a recommendatory body and it's the final approval of the city council that counts most. Okay, so, uh, thank you very much to all of you and hopefully that all our dreams will come true. Thank you very much. And I hope that the, all the teachers, all the instructors, professors here will will benefit from this project. This is my, 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 also my dream and hope to everybody. Thank you very much. And, you know, it's a process wherein there is a pros and cons. Thank you very much. Okay, moving ahead. Uh, next agenda will be, if you want to listen, that's okay, want to join us. Use permit UPR dash zero four dash twenty-one dash one four eight five five and design review DR zero four dash twenty-one dash zero one four eight five six. To demolish an existing McDonald's restaurant with a drive-through at five oh five Cerro Monte Boulevard and construct a new McDonald's restaurant with a double drive-through. The planning manager will descend this. Uh, Mr. Michael.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. This is a use permit and design review for the reconstruction of McDonald's right across from Target on Cerro Monte Boulevard. That existing McDonald's has been there for quite some time. And McDonald's Corporation has decided it's time for new McDonald's. So again, there would, the requirement for the use permit stems from the provision of a drive-through as part of the reconstruction. And so that's what the planning commission is deciding whether the, you know, a drive-through restaurant should be allowed. The hours of operation of the proposed drive-through would be twenty-four seven. That's the current hours of operations. Those would not be expanded. Dining room hours would remain the same also between five AM and eleven PM. And the number of parking spaces on the site are fifty-two parking spaces. We discussed in the staff report how the number of parking spaces is sixteen less than what the zoning ordinance mandates at a certain described rate of one parking space per seventy-five square feet. There is a allowance, though, that we can use a parking space ratio of one fifty if the applicant was to provide a steady supporting, that sort of a ratio, and they have done that. So staff is supporting the fifty-two parking spaces as shown in the site plan. The applicant also has provided as part of the parking analysis, a vehicle queuing analysis that supports a ten-vehicle queue. One of our chief concerns with this site, and it's something that probably won't go away entirely, is vehicles that line up in the queue to, that's the line of cars that are ordering and spilling into Cerro Monte Boulevard. To help with this situation, the applicant has proposed a double uh, drive-through. And we see that already implemented here near city hall in the McDonald's there, where the order taker can actually deal with two different people. The capacity of the queue has actually expanded. And so that is proposed at this site as well. And so that's something that should help with the situation of cars, again, spilling into Cerro Monte Boulevard. Site is somewhat shallow as we can see. I'm not, we'll skip the slide where I think everybody knows where it is, what it looks like. Existing restaurant. So this is the existing drive-through here, the existing restaurant in the site is somewhat shallow and doesn't lend itself to a very long vehicle queue. Just over the years, it's become a situation where cars do back out into Cerro Monte. And so the city staff, a long story is that the city staff and the applicants, traffic engineer have tried to work through a solution to maximize the vehicle queue length. So this is the existing building here. It's kind of a lot of information here. And so this is what the city has agreed to support. Moving the store back toward the southerly portion of the site and putting the double drive-through at that location. The vehicle queue, again, beginning in Cerro Monte Boulevard here and entering the order take, order placement maze here. So this is the general site plan for the McDonald's. This is just the landscape plan that shows where landscaping would go. There's a design review component of this and the store, of course, would receive a modern architectural theme consistent with McDonald's in the area that have been reconstructed. This is actually the elevation that we would see from Cerro Monte Boulevard. It's called the right elevation in the plans. The rear elevation where the order taking would occur. This is a south elevation. And these are the side elevations. This is called the front of the store. This is actually facing east toward Geller. Well, there's a gasoline station, of course, in the middle, but, and then the rear elevation facing the adjacent condo development that's been approved. So there are some things for the planning commission to consider in terms of granting this use permit. The city staffs worked with the applicant to devise these. They're very similar to what the planning commission and city council opposed upon In-N-Out just up the street. Same issues, essentially air quality. The city is requiring an inline kitchen emission control system. So all the, you know, release of smoke vapors, things like this associated with McDonald's would be contained in a modernized emission control system. Noise, exterior speakers associated with the drive-through would have to have a volume control. So if we receive a lot of complaints from, for example, the adjacent residential neighborhood to the south, those could be adjusted if necessary. Light and glare also. You know, a new store like this will have modern lighting. We don't want it to, again, impact the residential area to the south. And if that does become a problem, we do have a condition of approval allowing us to require additional shielding or reduction of lights that are deemed excessive. We are recommending that the planning commission forward to the city council a recommendation for approval of the project. If there's any questions, representatives from McDonald's are present tonight. And the traffic consultant, I believe, is also present. And the city staff, of course, is also. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Michael? Okay, any question from my colleague or any observation? It's beautiful, I think. So. Any question from?
No, I, I'd just like, it's nice to see. No, it's nice to see a new building. It's nice to see that, you know, when you build a new building, it's up to codes, the current codes, the smell, as well as, you know, many times, I know I've driven by and their line is out on, on the streets. So it's important to bring that in. I agree.
I, I normally go to that place as well, especially during breakfast when I have somebody to meet. I've gone, that's good. Okay, so, nice. Any, any question from my colleague?
No.
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 Hearing none. Let's open this to public hearing. Those want stock? Anybody from the public? Do we have any public speaker table?
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, hearing none. So close to public hearing. Any motion to close to public hearing?
Make a motion.
Been moved a second there that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so, motion carried. Recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adapt the findings as outlined herein. Any motion?
Make a motion.
I second.
Been moved a second there that we adapt the findings as outlined herein. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Recommend that the City Council approve the project as categorically exempt per section one five three zero three of the California Environmental Quality Act motion. Motion to approve this.
I'll make a second.
Okay, uh, been moved and seconded that we recommend ad- adopt the findings. Let, all those in favor say aye.
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 Recommend that the City Council approve the project as oh, I think we have this. Motion to recommend that the City Council approve the use permit, U P R thus one thus twenty-one, one four eight five five and design review, D R thus four thus twenty-one thus one four eight five six. Uh, roll call, please.
Don't need a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we uh, recommended the City Council. Roll call.
Um, did we get a motion in?
Did you get a motion? I didn't actually hear a motion. Sorry.
I think I re- I heard Rick.
No, I said you need a motion, but so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, been moved and seconded that we uh, recommend that the City Council approve, approve of.
And I can do roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Pro año?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. So any, okay, public appearance, staff communication? Any, anything, anybody wants to say something?
No, I'm gonna be, um, uh, you, I'm just one little thing, uh, chair. I'm gonna be emailing the planning commissioners a course uh, that each of you will need to complete, the city asks that you complete. Um, so is it a ethics type of a course?
Oh, yes. Everybody needs the, the kind of the orientation, including the City Council.
Yes, so this, I believe it was.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we need that. Actually, uh, under the planning day Commission Academy, every two years we should have some sort of like sexual harassment. This, this, we should get the certificate from that. Through the, through the, through the email, not necessarily through by present there. Okay, yeah.
The name, the name of the course is um, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it's an additional course that the council is um.
We, we need that.
Acquiring all commissioners to take. So you'll be getting information from uh, Mike regarding that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah. Any, anyone, anyone, Teresa, you have anything?
No, I just said.
I ha- I have something to say here, which is to me, uh, I would say very alarming. I would, I would read this statement anyway. We are free, you know, we are, we're almost finished. Just to take this off my, my, my heart. Fellow commissioners, colleagues, I was appalled by the statement of Pam Diubani of the City Council during their June twenty-five session deliberating on sixteen eighteen Sullivan regarding cannabis. And I caught what she said. Telling this to, I think, Michael, your record will show this. Why are, why do we have to listen to the Planning Commission when they are just suggestive body? To the city, the City Council is the approving body. That's correct. But, but that statement is preposterous, responsible, and hysterical political chicanery. Under the laws and procedures, all projects for land use should start in the planning, which include the Planning Commission, which were supposed to be an advisory body of the City Council or recommending body for final approval of the City Council. That Pam Diubani should be well, well aware. We are a quasi-judicial body, a recommendatory body. I am just astonished for the delusional attitude of Pam Diubani, a member of the City Council and formerly as the chairman of the, this Planning Commission. This is our democratic processes all over America. Pam Diubani should exercise prudence by observing the so-called inter-parliamentary cortices. Respect the process because I will not allow anybody to, to treat us as a rubber stamp or undermine what we're doing today. We are doing it for free. We have had a big page here. Remember that. You should know the process of economic growth and development through the planning process and procedures. I beseech you, Pam Diubani, to stop your hypocrisy and political negativity attitude by putting the council into embarrassment. Remember this. The ends will always justify the means. Thank you very much. So that is just my statement too, because I I cannot sleep saying that we are just a rubber stamp to the City Council. With this, I would like to say, anybody else would like to say something?
I was just gonna say to keep being safe, please.
Yeah.
More I see on TV, it looks like things are getting yucky out there and just please be safe. That's all.
Yeah, we, you, you all want to be safe and sound.
Yes.
Not only in body, but in mind. Okay, thank you very much. So, anybody wants to talk otherwise?
No.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
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 Been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting until the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, staff.
Have a good night. We have to protect our interests as planning commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Alright, thank you.